As I promised in my writing last week, I'm back with our video series. Monticello Schools are filled with opportunities, athletics, activities, and smaller class sizes, and programs that help every student discover their path. But here's the cold hard fact: if the November 4th operating levy does not pass, those opportunities will shrink. Our budget is made up of people serving kids, and reductions mean fewer teachers, fewer programs, and higher costs for families. This series will outline exactly what's at stake, starting with activity fees, then class sizes, and finally, the programs and opportunities we may lose. Athletics and activities in Monticello are only affordable because our general fund contributes $1 million each year to support them. If the November 4th levy fails, that support goes away. Fees that are now $275 per season could rise to $1,000 per student per activity. Families would no longer have a cap. What costs $303 a year in local levy support could otherwise cost families hundreds more per season. This is the reality for activities if the levy does not pass. These are the cold hard facts. On November 4th, our community will decide the future of Monticello Schools.
Monticello is a great school district. I want to take a moment to tell you what makes it so special. We offer amazing classes, but I want to take you beyond the classroom and show you what Monticello Schools offers, from pre-K to graduation. Let's speedrun Monticello.
Eastfield is home to Monticello's youngest learners, offering nurturing programs like Magic Preschool and Early Childhood Family Education for the whole district. It also hosts a Connect Five program supporting young adults with significant cognitive needs. Beyond that, Eastfield is the heart and hub of the community education, providing opportunities for learning at every age while creating a welcoming environment built on trust, strong family partnerships, and a cultural growth.
Monticello's nature-based program reimagines education by taking students outdoors, where daily lessons unfold at Bertram Chain of Lakes Park, serving pre-K, kindergarten, and grades four through five. The program uses the natural environment as a living classroom to foster hands-on discovery, creativity, and meaningful learning rooted in real-world exploration.
At Pinewood Elementary, kindness and collaboration are at the core. Students experience character building through events like the Kindness at Tree and the Color One, guided by high school mentors. The school's positive learning atmosphere and strong family engagement make it a place where academic achievement and emotional growth flourish side by side.
Little Mountain welcomes families with warmth and celebration. From the Back to School Bash to its innovative Pause See to Read program featuring therapy dogs and creative stations, the school prioritizes connection, offering resources and support to keep parents actively involved in their children's success.
Monticello Middle School is a vibrant epicenter of nearly 1,000 students exploring academics, athletics, and the arts. With one-to-one chromebook access and dynamic programs like a state-of-the-art STEM program, band, orchestra, and choir, the school empowers learners through technology, problem-solving, and creativity. Its respectful team-based culture provides a supportive bridge between elementary school and high school.
Monticello High School is a place where students not only learn but lead. With a wide array of academic pathways, clubs, and sports, students are encouraged to chase their passions. Staff foster an inclusive, high-expectation environment, partnering with families and the community to ensure students graduate ready to thrive, especially through the use of their college-in-school classes and on-the-job training placement services, which allow students to start taking the next steps in their career while still in high school. Monticello isn't just a building, it's opportunity, connection, and growth. Let's keep moving forward together so we can offer even more to the next generation of students, because it's every kid, every day.
When you cast your ballot early, you're doing more than checking a box. You're investing in kids, classrooms, and opportunities for every kid, every day.
Early voting means you don't have to wait. You can skip the lines, take your time, and make sure your vote counts for what really matters: keeping Monticello strong.
If you got your ballot by mail, just fill it out and send it in. It only takes a few minutes. Or drop it off at your local election office or designated ballot box.
Need help? Just visit your county's election website. It'll show you how to register. Vote early in person or track your mail-in ballot.
This vote isn't about buildings, it's about students, about growing leaders, supporting families, and keeping those incredible Monticello moments alive.
Field trips, art, music, sports, these don't just happen by accident. They're here because we see them as vital to a well-rounded education and we choose to keep investing.
So don't wait. Send in your ballot or vote early in person. Let's protect what makes Monticello special.
Early voting is open. Let's make sure every kid gets every opportunity, because they deserve it.
Here's the cold hard fact: Monticello's programs, including career pathways, athletics, activities, STEM programming, apprenticeships, college-bound credits, and even our unique nature-based education program, are built on people. And if the levy fails, reductions mean cutting the very staff who make these opportunities possible. We are talking about losing programs that define Monticello and set our students apart. These aren't extras, they are core opportunities. Without levy support, many of them will be reduced or eliminated. This is the reality for our students if the levy does not pass. These are the cold hard facts. On November 4th, our community will decide the future of Monticello Schools.
Hi, our names are Jill and Brian. We have been actively involved with the Monticello School District for well over 30 years.
Referendums and levies are a tricky ask, and we totally understand that. As we're getting closer to retirement all the time, we are mindful of how we spend our money.
We have also seen many cuts over the years to our school district, and know this can limit opportunities for students, including larger class sizes and limiting extracurricular activities.
We believe the best investment we can do is to invest in students in our community. This can be done through investing time, and sometimes it requires investing our money. We know that a healthy school district is the foundation for a healthy community, and that is something we should all come together to support and strive for.
Here's the cold hard fact: if the levy fails, Monticello students will see larger class sizes across every grade level. With more than 8 million in planned reductions, our district will be forced to eliminate 39 to 50 staff positions. That means fewer adults in classrooms, less individual attention, and more challenges for students and all employees within the district. The difference between passing and failing the levy is the difference between manageable class sizes and overcrowded classrooms. This is the reality for our students. If the levy does not pass, these are the cold hard facts. On November 4th, our community will decide the future of Monticello Public Schools. As I promised in my writing last week, I'm back with our video series. Monticello Schools are filled with opportunities, athletics, activities, and smaller class sizes, and programs that help every student discover their path. But here's the cold hard fact: if the November 4th operating levy does not pass, those opportunities will shrink. Our budget is made up of people serving kids, and reductions mean fewer teachers, fewer programs, and higher costs for families. This series will outline exactly what's at stake, starting with activity fees, then class sizes, and finally, the programs and opportunities we may lose. Athletics and activities in Monticello are only affordable because our general fund contributes $1 million each year to support them. If the November 4th levy fails, that support goes away. Fees that are now $275 per season could rise to $1,000 per student per activity. Families would no longer have a cap. What costs $303 a year in local levy support could otherwise cost families hundreds more per season. This is the reality for activities if the levy does not pass. These are the cold hard facts. On November 4th, our community will decide the future of Monticello Schools.
Monticello is a great school district. I want to take a moment to tell you what makes it so special. We offer amazing classes, but I want to take you beyond the classroom and show you what Monticello Schools offers, from pre-K to graduation. Let's speedrun Monticello.
Eastfield is home to Monticello's youngest learners, offering nurturing programs like Magic Preschool and Early Childhood Family Education for the whole district. It also hosts a Connect Five program supporting young adults with significant cognitive needs. Beyond that, Eastfield is the heart and hub of the community education, providing opportunities for learning at every age while creating a welcoming environment built on trust, strong family partnerships, and a cultural growth.
Monticello's nature-based program reimagines education by taking students outdoors, where daily lessons unfold at Bertram Chain of Lakes Park, serving pre-K, kindergarten, and grades four through five. The program uses the natural environment as a living classroom to foster hands-on discovery, creativity, and meaningful learning rooted in real-world exploration.
At Pinewood Elementary, kindness and collaboration are at the core. Students experience character building through events like the Kindness at Tree and the Color One, guided by high school mentors. The school's positive learning atmosphere and strong family engagement make it a place where academic achievement and emotional growth flourish side by side.
Little Mountain welcomes families with warmth and celebration. From the Back to School Bash to its innovative Pause See to Read program featuring therapy dogs and creative stations, the school prioritizes connection, offering resources and support to keep parents actively involved in their children's success.
Monticello Middle School is a vibrant epicenter of nearly 1,000 students exploring academics, athletics, and the arts. With one-to-one chromebook access and dynamic programs like a state-of-the-art STEM program, band, orchestra, and choir, the school empowers learners through technology, problem-solving, and creativity. Its respectful team-based culture provides a supportive bridge between elementary school and high school.
Monticello High School is a place where students not only learn but lead. With a wide array of academic pathways, clubs, and sports, students are encouraged to chase their passions. Staff foster an inclusive, high-expectation environment, partnering with families and the community to ensure students graduate ready to thrive, especially through the use of their college-in-school classes and on-the-job training placement services, which allow students to start taking the next steps in their career while still in high school. Monticello isn't just a building, it's opportunity, connection, and growth. Let's keep moving forward together so we can offer even more to the next generation of students, because it's every kid, every day.
Good evening, everyone. As I called to order the regular school board meeting of Independent School District Number 882, it is 5:00 PM on Monday, October 6. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we are needing approval for tonight's tentative agenda. Sole moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. We are on to item number four. We have no citizen comments tonight, so we'll move on to five, fiscal stability. Looking for a motion for our consent agenda. Sole moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Moving right along to item number six, collaborative connections. I will pass the mic over to Superintendent Eric Olson to go over our gifts.
Right, so Kim Lilhag is on the Rotary, and he recently saw a team from the Rally to Read organization, Community Task Force, present to the Rotary and show the Magic Book Bus. And once he saw that, he reached out to myself and wanted to make sure that we had more early learning, especially more early learning Spanish books on the bus. So he donated $1,000 to the Rally to Read task force, and today I bring forth that generous $1,000 donation.
Therefore, be resolved by the Monticello School Board Number 882 to gratefully accept the following donations: Kim Lilhag for $1,000 to the Rally to Read Early Learning Program.
Second. Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by... Tell all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. So awesome, another week of more giving. Our community is incredible, especially when they see a need, so we appreciate that. Onto item B. Help me welcome up Activities Director Gary Revneg to go over a new co-op for the Boys' Swim and Dive Team.
All right, good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm here asking approval from the school board for a new co-op for our Boys' Swimming and Diving Program. We've always competed in the Class A level at the state tournament. With our enrollment numbers, we were pushed up to Double A for the next two years here. I was recently in a meeting with Becker and Big Lake. Big Lake has not had boys swimming due to a lack of interest, and Becker had three swimmers last year, and they co-opted with St. Cloud. So I asked them if they'd be interested in co-opping with us, because we are now in Double A for the two-year cycle, and they're both very excited. Big Lake, right now, thinks they have two swimmers, both middle school students, and Becker believes that they will have three. Maybe, being in Monticello, a little bit closer than St. Cloud, maybe we'd get a few more athletes from those two schools. We think our participation numbers will be down a little bit after graduating a nice group last year, so we could use the extra swimmers. It wouldn't cost our school district anything. Those students would be responsible to get over here on their own, just like we do with our hockey co-op. And then we would bill those schools by a percentage of however many swimmers they have. We'd take our total expenses, divide it out by number of participants, and they would pay their part. So it would actually benefit our school district to add a few swimmers. Any questions?
A question, because we just moved into the Double A, and it's for two years. What would happen if... Because now they're going to evaluate all three populations, right, our school populations. Would we ever have the ability to go back Single A? What would happen to the co-op then?
Yeah, that's a great question. We talked to Becker and Big Lake about this already. We're hoping to build their numbers up, so maybe those two could co-op on their own if we go back to Class A. If we stay in Double A, we'd want to keep them, because we could use all the participants that would be interested in being on our team. So it'll just depend if Monticello goes back after this two-year cycle to Class A, and we told them we would dissolve the co-op then, and then they'd go back to St. Cloud. So they're aware of that, if they can't have their own team.
Yeah, even with the goal of building their own, that's huge. They've got a beautiful pool in Becker even to co-op.
Right. So both schools reached out to the families that have swimmers in the Boys' Program right now, and they're very excited about coming to Monticello instead of St. Cloud, a lot closer. And we'd probably do one swim meet over at Becker this year.
Other questions?
What's the biggest negative of a cooperative sponsorship?
I can't think of one, that's why I'm bringing it forward, because financially, I think it would benefit our school district. We'd be providing opportunities for a few students over there to come over here. They're looking for a home to swim, and they know it's for two years right now, and then we'll reevaluate after two years. So I can't think of any negatives right now. Our coach is in favor of it, and I think it'd benefit our program. If we had high participation numbers and they might be taking someone's spot, I'd be worried about it, but we're not in that position right now. Our Girls' Program, for example, is extremely strong right now. Our Boys will be rebuilding this year, so we could use extra bodies in the pool.
Do they bring any coaching with them?
No, but they would, like I said, they would offset some of our expenses.
I like helping out the neighboring schools, and some of the neighboring schools also help us. It'll be way better for the Becker swimmers that have been going to St. Cloud. This will be a better option for them, too, so... Any other questions?
It could happen.
This is an action item. Sole moved.
Second.
By Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you for joining us and letting us know about this awesome new co-op.
All right, thank you.
Exciting for the Swim and Dive Team, for the boys. Onto item number seven, teaching and learning. Superintendent Eric Olson is going to be going over some staff recognition.
All right, first, I have three people to recognize in the last calendar year. We've had three people doing some state-level work with the Minnesota Department of Education. The first person is Jen Vogel, who was working on the Science Committee. We have Jackie Hoker, who is working in Special Education. And we also had a former board member, Kathy Zbarth, working on health standards. So all three being recognized here recently for their state-level participation in making sure that the policies and assessments have quality educators looking out for Monticello and like-sized school districts. So I just want to acknowledge those three for their individual work, but their representation of Monticello has been very, very sharp, and we're passing on some special appreciation and recognition for them here tonight.
Our staff never cease to amaze me on how much they do outside of even our current district and helping, even at the MSBA yearly conference. I don't know how many times we presented, even since I've been on the board, just sharing successes here at our district level and then with the rest of the state, so it's awesome. All right, moving on to item number eight, safe and healthy culture. Going back to Superintendent Olson to go over National Custodian Day and Coaches' Day.
Awesome, so I have some highlights and spotlights here that I want to bring forward. First, I'll give our coaches a shout-out on National Coaches' Day, but it's a great day to honor all of our coaches who... to honor all of our coaches who sponsor our athletes at the end of the school day. We have a very, very strong activities and athletic program, and coaches are the ones that make that such a vibrant part of our school district. Coaches, led by Activities Director Gary Revnig, have had a lot of success on the... off the field, or on the field, but they also translate to great amount of success in the classroom. And so we're really proud of the work they do, not only to make their athletes and participants better at their sport or activity, but also just better human beings. And we're very, very fortunate to have a very strong activities program. Thank you, coaches, on National Coaches' Day. And then Custodial and Grounds Department recognition. I just want to take a moment to recognize the incredible work for our custodians across the Monticello District. They are an essential part of every day. Our team ensures that our schools are clean, safe, well-maintained. Their dedication supports the success, direct success of our students, and their work often happens behind the scenes. They're here all summer, they're here on holidays, they're here on when other staff members are off for extended period of times. And so the effort that they put in across a whole calendar year is very, very felt. Their impact is seen every day, and like to take this moment to give them a huge shout-out on National Custodian Day, which was last week. Then I have two individual spotlights that I think it's a good time. The first one is recognition to Greg Hoker. In one week, I had two people bring his name forward. Greg's leadership and attention to detail and commitment to excellence are evident in the appearance and safety of our outdoor spaces, from maintaining our athletic fields to managing seasonal challenges. Greg consistently goes above and beyond to keep our campuses in top condition for our students and community. And so that was brought forth by Buildings and Grounds Director Terry, but also I want to give a shout-out to educational support staff, who never misses an opportunity to share about staff or students who are making a huge impact, and that's Joanie McAlas. So Joanie doesn't like to talk about herself, she always likes to make others feel valued, important, and seen. And she recently made sure that she tugged on my arm and said that Greg Hoker does an amazing job across the district, and we are so fortunate to have him in the Buildings and Grounds position. And I just, I want to take the time then to also give Joanie McAlas a shout-out, because I've just never met a person who's more positive and never misses an opportunity to make others feel valued. So Joanie, you're also seen and heard across the district, and so those are two individual spotlights that I bring forward here to you, School Board, tonight.
Any additional comments from the board? On our amazing staff, again? All right, well, thank you for all of your guys' hard work. I know I can just speak to firsthand from the custodians how much the custodians help us out at the swim pool, because I just see that, and so they are incredible, and they bend over backwards for us whenever we need anything, so... Huge thank you to them and all the work they do behind the scenes. A lot of people don't understand. All right, next, we are moving on to item B. Please help me welcome to the podium Matt Hammer from Ellers Incorporated to go over the bond refunding presentation and resolution. Welcome, Matt.
So Matt's been here before, but just wanted to introduce him officially as a representative from Ellers to help us with a refunding and bond discussion.
Thanks, Tina. Good evening. Matt Hammer, District's Financial Advisor. And really, what we're here to talk about today is managing future taxes and trying to lower taxes for property owners. And one of the things that we do on a routine basis is the district has outstanding bonds that were issued for projects. In this case, it's the middle school bonds that were issued. And when municipal bonds are issued, they have what we call call provisions in them that restrict the time that districts can go back or municipalities can go back and issue tax-exempt refinancings. And right now, this issue, the call date is 2/1 of February of '26, February 1st of '26. And what that in essence means at a high level is that the district can look to refinance with another tax-exempt financing. So prior to that time, just the district would have to look at a taxable issue. And as we're getting to that February call date, it looks like we're going to be able to produce some debt service levy tax relief for property owners by issuing new bonds to repay the old bonds at lower interest rates. I do just have some high-level information of kind of how this functions, so if you think of it similar to a home refinancing, the goal is to lower overall interest costs for the school district and the financings that you have entered into. In this case, it was a 2016 issue, and really, that funding cannot go back to anything by law, other than reducing taxes. So the district can't take that money into their budget. It has to go back to lower future debt service levies, and that's... It doesn't necessarily have to happen in a specific year, and in fact, just with your structure, we likely would go to look at reducing levies out in a future year. There is some federal requirements around that, and we're within the 90-day requirement, so that's where we're at right now, and it looks like we'll be able to move forward. The 2016 A issue, the original amount was a little bit north of 38 million. It was authorized in the election back in November 3rd of 2015. It financed projects at your high school, middle school, and elementary school, additions at the time, district-wide safety and security improvements, technology improvements, and various site improvements, as well as improvements to activity spaces at the time. So that bond had a 10-year call typically. Depending on market conditions, you're going to be seeing an eight-to-10-year call when bonds are issued. Right now, there's $26.4 million worth of callable principal. The interest rates that are on each one of those maturities range between 3% and 4%, and we're within that 90-day window, so we have to close February or November 3rd or later. So any time now, the district would be able to look at a tax-exempt current refinancing of those at that issue. This gives you a big... Just to... Don't think of this as an exact timeline right now. Really, what we're looking at tonight, this gives you a hypothetical look of how fast we could get to market if we were to move forward. The authorization tonight establishes a minimum savings parameter, and we've established that at at least $100,000. It's likely we're going to save more than $100,000, but what that's going to allow us to do is two things. You guys have meetings on Monday nights. Lots of municipalities have meetings on Monday nights, right? So if we... What we'll likely do is look to move the sale to a different day of the week, and this will allow us to do that, because we're establishing Superintendent and Tina to be able to sign off on the issue as long as... Along with one board member, assuming we meet the minimum savings parameter, and then the School Board would ratify that sale at a future meeting. So in this scenario, we would look to solicit and go to market with the bond sometime in October, and then we would look to have the Board ratify at their meeting on November 17th, but we likely would look at selling sometime the week before. What we're seeing in the market, when we initially put the results together, rates had lowered about two weeks ago, they've come up a little bit. So it's not out of the question that we'll push this back a little bit, from the standpoint of trying to maximize savings, depending what we see. We have a couple sales in the market this week, and then we'll work with Tina and Superintendent Olson to kind of refine the timeline as we move forward. That issue, it has a call date of February of '26, so right now, based on the interest rates that we're seeing, we're not looking to actually refinance the whole issue, just a portion of the issue that makes sense based on what we're seeing for interest rates. But based on the couponing that we see in the issue, there isn't a lot of incentive for us to wait, because we're going to pay at higher rates, right? Going forward, after we pass that call date, so at least for a portion of the issue, it makes sense for us to be moving forward at this point in time, based on what we're seeing in the market. So that's high-level what we're looking at. Again, really, the goal here is, and required by law, is we have to reduce future debt service levies, and because of... We're at that call date, and we can enter into a new tax-exempt refinancing. Based on our preliminary numbers, we've looked at savings estimates between $300,000 to $400,000 possibly, in being able to produce that savings. It makes sense for us to be looking at this at this time, but we'll refine that schedule with District Administration, and then give folks a more refined timeline as we move forward. I can answer any questions folks have.
Yeah, I think we're going to have a few. Thanks for being here, Matt. Can you just make sure that we're clear that this has nothing to do with the operating levy that is on the ballot next month?
Nope, it has nothing to do with the... What with the operating levy that's on the ballot. It has everything to do with managing taxes for property owners and trying to minimize the tax burden for property owners in the district.
Okay, thank you. To save these hundreds of thousands of dollars, is that simply around a reduced interest rate, or is there more to it than that?
It comes down to a reduced interest rate, right? So the interest rates that you're paying on the existing bonds, we can go out in the market right now and get a lower interest rate. So just like a home mortgage, if you go to refinance, right, that's high-level what the goal is, is you're trying to lower the interest rate you're paying on your existing commitments.
When we compare it to a home mortgage, a lot of times, people think about a 15-year mortgage, a 20-year mortgage. Third, is that... Does the payback period change, or is that something that we can look at?
Yeah, right now, we're not looking at necessarily changing the payback period. It is something that can be looked at when you have a current refunding, but we're assuming the same timeframe for the payback. What we will look at doing is continue paying, possibly paying at the same tax rates or same tax impact that the property owners are seeing, which would allow us to pay principal off faster, and then maybe push the savings back in the schedule. But there isn't any anticipated change in the repayment period right now.
And then, when we talk about the savings, does that savings all go back to the property owners, or does that benefit the district somehow?
It's all going... It's required by statute to go back to reduce future taxes for property owners through the debt service levy. So you're paying those, you're required by law to levy 105% of your debt service payments. What we're looking to do is reduce the interest costs that property owners are paying, and then that savings with lower interest rate is required, the future debt service levy, so it's reducing property taxes for property owners. And the district can't take it in their budget, so it's not allowed to be brought into your budget. It has to go to do that, for that purpose.
Are these interest rates always fixed, or could they be variable?
When we would go to market the bonds, they would have a fixed interest rate at the time that we competitively sell them, so we would take competitive bids on a new bond issue. We would go out to market and get the lowest competitive rate in the market that day, and then those rates would be fixed from that period of time, so there would be no variable-rate debt that the district would have. And you currently don't have any variable-rate debt. It's all fixed-rate debt.
Is there any cost to the district for you to look into this in the event that it doesn't end up happening, where we do the refunding? Is that the right term, refunding?
Yep, there is no cost for us unless that the deal moves forward, right, and there's an actual bond issue. So like any service provider, we're compensated for going through with that process, but if we don't get to market, there's no cost, no cost for our services in this. And we also... The district would look at a rating, right, and go through those pieces, those costs. What we would do likely is we're going to look at market conditions, and if there's any reason, we don't think this is going to be a successful refinancing, we would pull the issue. It's also part of the reason why we have the parameter. We would establish a parameter, so there's no exposure for the district as part of the overall issue, so that you would end up having a higher cost. So bids would get rejected if that would be the case, which is, we would look to try to pull the issue before that would happen, anyway.
Does that higher cost... Does that higher cost include the cost for your expenses?
Yep, so anything that we're talking about from the standpoint of interest rate savings is included. It's a net savings cost, so that includes anything cost of issuance related, the overall issue. So this would only be brought forward if it was going to actually reduce taxes for property owners, net of any cost.
Okay.
If this was approved and it goes through, and there's a savings by us taking action, does it reduce the ability or limit the ability of us to do this again a year from now, two years, three years, five years?
So these bonds likely would be issued with new call provision, right, that would either be non-callable or have an extended call date that would be out seven or eight years. But what we're looking at right now is there's a portion of the issue, fiscal years '35 through '40, right now, that we wouldn't call, and that would still have its call date on it. So as we get out to that point in time, or sometime between now and then, you're going... After you pass your February 1st call date, you could call those bonds at any time. And that's something that we work with the district on a routine basis. If there's any point in time where it makes sense to look at lowering interest rates, and we can, we're exploring those avenues.
And then the aggregate amount is 27.8, but these are for 26.4, so why... The delta between those, why is there a delta?
Yeah, so that's the callable principal. That's a good thing that I forgot to touch on. Right now, your authorized amount, in essence, allows for the full amount to be issued and refinanced. That overall amount covers any... If we ended up with a discount situation, where we got a discount bid instead of a premium, that we'd have enough amount to cover those costs. It's not likely we would be doing that, and right now, we're in fact not even looking at refinancing the whole issue. But what we're looking for the authorization to do, if rates for some reason came way down, right, we would want to be able to take advantage of that change in the market and be able to refinance everything, if it made sense. Right now, we're only looking at your maturities that are between fiscal '27 and fiscal '34 as making sense, which is about half of the overall issue.
Okay, okay.
Yep. So really, what the purpose of the resolution, as stated, is to provide the district as much flexibility, right, depending on what we're seeing in the market, and then we'll be in contact with District Administration and kind of have a more refined plan that we would come back with. But the goal is to set the kind of... In motion that we could get to market on a fairly quick basis, if we thought it made sense for us to do over the next few months.
So as I understand it, it's the most fiscally responsible thing we can do for our taxpayers in our community right now, because it'd actually be giving back to them at some point or another.
Right, correct.
Other questions, do board members have? This is an action item that also has a resolution, and on the resolution, what all needs to be read?
Just a bold statement.
Resolution stating the intention of the School Board to issue general obligation school building refunding bond Series 2025A, and the aggregate principal amount not to exceed approximately $26,700,000, and taking other actions with respect thereto.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you for coming and explaining to us. It's a great thing. It's exciting, so...
Yep, this is good stuff, right? This is not asking to increase taxes. We're trying to manage taxes for property owners in the best way we can, and for the district to be fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars as well, right, when these opportunities arise. So we'll be back in touch, and I'm sure we'll be talking to you guys soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move to item C, first reading of policy. Help me welcome up to the podium... Help me welcome up to the podium Director of Human Resources, Rob Daniker.
All right, Chair Seeburn, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. As promised last month, we only have five policies for review this evening. And so, again, just a reminder to everybody, the policy committee meets prior to the first board meeting every month, and spends time reviewing policies that are either due to statutory update, or review procedure, or other. And so, we are now in the third year of a review cycle procedure, and so, again, we're gonna start seeing the fruits of that labor, in terms of less policies per meeting, which is a good thing for all of us, I think. All right, so tonight, the first policy for first read is 203.2. This is order of the regular school board meeting. The purpose of this policy is to ensure consistency in the order of business at regular school board meetings. This one is coming forward, as I mentioned, regarding a possible procedural update, with a new section four regarding moments of silence and proclamations. Basically, the new language outlines that the school board may consider during the course of a school board meeting, either a proclamation or moment of silence to recognize an individual under one of three circumstances, either the student is or was formerly a student of the district, is or was formerly an employee of the district, or is or was formerly a local community member whose work had a significant impact on the district. Pausing for questions on 203.2.
Yeah, what was the conversation around where we landed with keeping this at a local level?
Oh, yeah.
I can speak to the policy committee meeting. So, it's, I'm in with the lawyer, and our lawyer is who helped us generate language for what the district has done in past practice, and typically, what school districts do, because it's a local community. So legally, on who we really can give those moments of silence to?
So it sounds like we would keep the moments of silence for individuals impacted by whatever within the boundary of the district?
District.
Okay.
Specific to the school district, so either had, either a student, an employee, or had significant impact, say, like a coach within the district, or someone that volunteered, or impacted the school district directly.
Was there conversation about what we would do, in the event that a particular figure outside of the district, something happens, and we feel that that individual has positive influence on either the area or public education? What would we do in the, I guess, let me throw a major political figure, say, a President of the United States gets assassinated, or something like that someday? Did we talk about how we would handle that, in making a policy for it?
We didn't go through every single scenario on there, so in the policy committee, we just talked about all the local aspects. If there was, forbid, some major event, you know, I think then it would be a discussion at the board level with all of us, what we'd wanna do. I don't think we're essentially limited on the board side 100%.
Mm-hmm, we did have conversation in regards to, where do you limit it, and how many moments of silence then would you have per meeting? And would it be every single meeting, you know? So that, we did have conversation in regards to that, and that we needed to have some sort of policy that was legally sound, that we worked with our lawyer on how we move forward.
So to ask a question the other direction, then, I think one concern with having a policy like this would be the event that we fail to provide a moment of silence for an individual that anyone thinks should have been offered a moment of silence, and maybe we didn't feel like they fell into the categories that we're offering. Who will keep an eye on this, so that we're not letting people miss out on the moments of silence we should be offering for them?
I think any board member can always bring up, if they think there should be, it's appropriate time to have a moment of silence, and then it should be the board chair to work with the lawyer to figure out if it falls within our legal parameters of what we can and can't do at a board level in an open meeting, versus what they practice on their own.
So, number one and number two, doesn't state anything about impact to the community or the district. So who would, who would fall into one and two, and who wouldn't, I guess? Because I look at this as...
Student or employee of the district?
But then, would we say, any student that passes away is gonna get a moment of silence? We're not gonna, we're not gonna know about them all in time, unfortunately, those that have graduated and moved on years before. We probably know about the employees, I think we'd do a pretty good job of that, Superintendent Olson always has. I'd just feel really bad if somebody felt like, you know, Joe got one, and Robbie didn't, and why is that? I like the idea of where number three talks about significant impact, and we would just have to make sure we have a good understanding of what the definition of significant is, for who qualifies.
I'm not sure if this is a point of order, but could we open up the policy, just so that everyone can see the three points that are being discussed?
Thanks, Kathy.
Maybe expand a moment.
We can definitely take that back and review at policy, Mark. I just wrote down a note saying, for you're suggesting items one and two to say significant impact, for a student, as well as significant impact, or an employee? Is that what I hear you saying?
I think that's probably going to define this better for the future, is if we note that there was significant impact. I think the tough one is gonna be the student of the district. And what, you know, what does it mean to say they had significant impact? I think we can all recognize that all of our employees could justifiably be considered significant impact, and would maybe merit a moment of silence. But at what point does a student that qualify?
I would just make sure that we uphold the motto that we've been, you know, using every kid every day. I just would want you guys to, you know, pause and have that discussion, you know, judging a student who's maybe only been here five years on the face of the earth, in comparison to a staff member who's maybe worked for the district 30 years, is a big challenge. And so, I feel like the more broad on the student one gives the district more chance to uphold the district model, potentially. And it sounds like, like the employee one is maybe easier, and I would agree. I think I agree with what you say, but I also wanna just, like, throw out the words of caution when it comes to student, because I think that one gets into a slippery judgment slope, that I think would be hard.
That's what I'm saying, too. I think it could be very tricky with the students.
We can bring it, this has all been reviewed by our lawyer already, so we can bring up your suggestion, see what he states as well. But this is reviewed by our lawyer, to make sure that we were legally sound in this coverage.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I understand Mark's position. Is your position that this is too constrictive, or too open?
Too open.
Okay, okay.
This passed what's written now?
What we've been doing.
It just hasn't been written down, I believe, on there, so...
Been put in policy.
Right.
I don't remember, actually. I mean, maybe some people had a little bit older, like me, Jeff, sorry, call you up. I mean, I don't remember.
I think Jeff's mic is muted. Is your mic muted?
I'm just trying to think back of when we have had a moment of silence, and how we had determined that in the past, and what we had...
We've probably had four in the last 18 months.
Yeah, first, yeah.
Is what I could count.
Students and staff.
What was the determination of that, for those?
They were all staff students.
And students, yeah.
Recently graduated student, two current students, two staff member that had been a seasonal staff member for years. Coach and...
Is this the MSBA policy right here?
No, there isn't one. Good discussion.
See, and this says it may, so it's not an obligation. The score may consider, it's not that we would have to for everyone, but, yeah, it would just be a discussion, but Jeff's point, I... On the, you know, decision to say yes or no, like, I haven't been in any of those, those meetings conversations, so I don't know how's it determined exactly, but...
Is that, is this something that someone from the public could request? Like, would the school board recognize my significant, who passed away and was, I don't know?
A coach, or a employee, or a... Yeah, I just wrote my notes for us to take it back to policy, and look at who, how is the decision, does all the board members have to agree, then, prior to the board meeting?
We've just looked at it. I'd say, you know, it started, I think we always tried to do this, you know, for years, those of you that have been here. But I think Kath, the former Chair Zeebarth, being in tune with the community, really recognized that it was important to make sure that staff felt very honored, staff, family. And then, we just unfortunately had a couple of students that, you know, that families who'd lost students. So, we were trying to uphold consistency throughout these occurrences, but I think it is coming forward for not only consistency, but making sure that everybody understands how we're moving forward. So I think it's really good discussion to have, since we had so many in a short period of time, how we're applying the consistency test. I think now, we'll get to somewhere, someplace where we can all rest, knowing that we have it now.
So, Mark, what we'll do is, we'll bring this back to policy, so it won't go to second read. We'll bring it back to policy at the next policy meeting, partner again with our lawyer on a couple of these items that you brought up, and then we'll bring it back again for first read.
I think if, as long as we're confident that within the district, we have awareness on when former employees pass, and this could be, they were an employee last year, or 35 years ago. To me, they probably all deserve to be recognized. It'd be hard to say any of them don't deserve that. But from a student standpoint, I could see absolutely present students. I can absolutely see the recent student, like, we had a couple of very recently graduated I just don't know how far you go back, but there could be, you know, the ability to subjectively grab a former student from years and years and years ago, that qualifies under number three.
I get what you're saying. So that's something that we can definitely review on, where's the cutoff? Because we've had a lot of staff that have passed, that we've sent emails out, but we didn't do a moment of silence for, just because of how long it had been, since the staff member was within the district. So those are things that I think we should review then.
Good. Nice work, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. The next policy for first read this evening is policy 303, superintendent selection. The purpose of this policy is to convey to the school community that the authority to select an employee superintendent is vested in the school board. This is brought forward due to our review cycle. It is the only policy within the 300 series. There is no updates recommended, so it would be for review only. Any questions on 303? Moving forward to 607, organization of grade levels. The purpose of this policy is to address the grade level organization of schools within the school district. Currently, the district does not have a policy 607. However, the organization of grade levels within the school district is referenced in or directly, or indirectly, in three Minnesota statutes. And so, MSBA does recommend having a policy like this on file. Any questions on 607? Moving forward, the next one is 621, literacy in the Read Act. The purpose of this policy, the policy aligns with the Minnesota law established in the Read Act, and on other topics related to reading. The Read Act is still relatively in its infancy. It was established by law a couple of years back, and as the training is currently ongoing, MDE has, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say MDE, the legislature, with recommendations from entities such as MDE, has continued to modify the expectations of the Read Act. And so, this is coming forward largely because of legislative updates, specifically addressed in this one, is some timeline clarification, some re-characterization of language pieces, immersion programs, and so, really, just a function of the growth and development of what Read Act is, and how it impacts schools. Any questions on 621? Okay, moving forward to our last one, this is 704, development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets and a fixed asset accounting system. The purpose of this policy is to provide for the development and maintenance of an inventory of the fixed assets of the school district, and the establishment and maintenance of a fixed asset accounting system. And this is, we're bringing this forward as a procedural update this evening, also recommended by our auditors, who are in the process of completing their work for the district. The dollar amounts that are associated with different aspects of this policy are recommended for amendment, such as the capitalization level, the group purchases thresholds, there is a section that was redundant, recommended for deletion, the capitalization and depreciation threshold would move from 2,500 to 5,000, and then just some organizational pieces at the end of the policy, recommended as well. But any questions on 704?
Yeah, you mentioned the 5,000 is new from 2,500, is the $25,000 number new, too, for the group purchases?
Towards the Director of Building, Business Services, and she's gonna make her way up to the podium. And I'm gonna step aside for a moment.
So for the grouping of fixed assets, that was a new accounting rule that schools had to follow, in, I think, starting last year. So that is a new provision, so we pick 25,000 as a grouping, for like TVs, or desks, chairs, whatever, because sometimes things will fall under that 2,500, or now 5,000, but as, if we buy something in a group, we have to tag that together. So it'll be a little harder to monitor and keep track, you know, as things move around in rooms and buildings and such, but hopefully, we'll do the best we can.
So is $25,000 the right number?
What we're starting with.
Yeah.
Auditors felt comfortable with our recommendation.
Any other questions for Tina? You're excused. Any other questions on 704? Okay, and so with that, that's our first reading. No action necessary tonight. We'll bring five of the six back for second reading at our next meeting, and we'll take 203.2 back for some more committee work in November.
Thank you, Director Daniker.
You.
All right, and this brings us to adjournment at 5:49 PM. We will be following this meeting, we will start back up at 5:55 for our work session. And our next school board meeting will be Monday, October... And our next school board meeting will be Monday, October 20th at 6:00 PM. Have a great evening.